...newly elected President Burton Trustees.
Actually, the president of the board of trustees.
I Dan A. McGillis.
Hi Dan A. McGillis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The charters, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Round Lake.
The charters, laws, and ordinances of Village of Round Lake.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As President of the Village of Round Lake.
As President of the Village of Round Lake.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I Patricia C. Blauw.
I Patricia C. Blauw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The charter of laws and ordinances.
The charter, laws, and ordinances.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
The Village of Round Lake.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as clerk.
The duties of my office.
As clerk. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I Henry Fry Jr.
I Henry Fry Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I Susan Trippan.
I Susan Trippan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
The charters, laws, and ordinances.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I Donald Newby.
I Donald Newby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
The Charter of Laws and Ordinances.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
Of the Village of Round Lake.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
As trustee of the Village of Round Lake.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Trustee Blauw, if you could read the proposal, please.
Trustee Clemmons.
Present.
Trustee Fry.
Present.
Trustee Newby.
Present.
Trustee Simon Sully.
Present.
Trustee Trippan.
Present.
Trustee Wozinski.
Present.
Moving on to item 3.1, approve the minutes of the public hearing, April 1, 2013.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Simon Sully, seconded by trustee Trippan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Moving to item 3.2, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 15, 2013. So, uh...
Sergeant.
Motion made by trustee Newby, seconded by trustee Clemmons. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The vote? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3, I'm going to come down from behind the dice and make these presentations.
Yes, start with us, so 23, 24, and 25.
Sonny's 23?
23 for the first one.
Edith Saunders?
Yes, sir.
Joyce, this is 24. Moving on to item 4.1, to adopt a resolution recognizing trustee Sonia Sandoval for her service to the Village of Round Lake. I'm going to motion.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Newby, seconded by trustee Trippan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Village of Round Lake Resolution 13-R-23, a resolution to recognize trustee Sonia Sandoval for her service to the Village of Round Lake, whereas Sonia Sandoval served dutifully as a member of the Board of Trustees since 2009. Got ahead of myself. And whereas Sonia Sandoval performed her duties and responsibilities with dedication to do the best job possible and always worked with a focus on the best interest of the village, and whereas the dedication of Sonia Sandoval and her devotion to duty have had a positive influence in the community. Now, therefore, the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Round Lake do hereby tender this resolution extending our deep appreciation to Ms. Sandoval's service to the Village of Round Lake. On behalf of all of our citizens, we wish her success in all her future endeavors. Moving on to item 4.2, adopt a resolution recognizing Village Clerk Joyce Sweeten for her service to the Village of Round Lake. Any motion?
Both.
Second.
For trustee Newby and seconded by trustee Clemmons.
All of...discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Joyce, can you come up here, please? Getting better now. The Village of Round Lake Resolution 13-R-24, a resolution recognizing Village Clerk Joyce Sweeten for her service to the Village of Round Lake, whereas Joyce Sweeten served dutifully as Village Clerk since 2009 and has supported the important work of the Village Board, and whereas Joyce Sweeten worked with others throughout the Round Lake area to do the best job possible with all of her duties as Village Clerk, and whereas Joyce Sweeten earned the respect of the community while performing all of the duties and responsibilities of the Village Clerk with dedication to the job, and whereas Joyce Sweeten has provided a positive influence and impression to our residents of Round Lake. Now, therefore, the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Round Lake do hereby tender this resolution extending our sincere appreciation for the distinguished service to the Village of Round Lake by Mrs. Sweeten. On behalf of all of our residents, we wish her success in the future and thank her for her service. I just want to read what these plaques say. The Village of Round Lake, certification of appreciation awarded to Joyce Sweeten, also to Sandoval, for your service from May 4, 2009, to May 6, 2013, as Village Clerk of the Village of Round Lake, Lake County, Illinois, recognizing your thorough efforts, care, concern, and service to the citizens of the Round Lake, of the Village of Round Lake. This certificate is awarded to Joyce Sweeten on May 6, 2013. Thank you, Joyce. Moving on to item 4.3, adopt a resolution recognizing Village President James R. Dietz for his service to the Village of Round Lake. I hear a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trustee Fry, seconded by trustee Wozinski. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Village of Round Lake Resolution 13-R-25. Village of Round Lake Resolution 13-R-25, a resolution recognizing Village President James R. Dietz for his service to the Village of Round Lake, whereas James R. Dietz has served the Village of Round Lake for many years in different positions, both elected and appointed, and whereas James R. Dietz was appointed to the Planned Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals and was chairman for the majority of the time that he served, and whereas James R. Dietz has served the Village as Village President since 2009, and whereas James R. Dietz served the greater community on the Central Lake County Joint Water Action Agency Executive Board, the CENTCOM Executive Board, the Lake County Stormwater Commission, and whereas the dedication to duty and genuine interest in the Village of Round Lake expressed by James R. Dietz has had a positive influence in our community. Now, therefore, the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Round Lake do hereby tender this resolution extending our deep appreciation to Mr. Dietz's distinguished service to the Village of Round Lake. On behalf of all of our citizens, we wish him in all future endeavors and a sincere thank you. Moving on to item 4.4, any public comment? No public comment?
No.
We have one.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ray. Any other public comment? Moving on to item Fry, consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, at this time I'd like to make an omnibus motion that includes item 7.2, approve the accounts payable in the amount of $243,442.23. Item 7.3, approve payroll for the period ending April 21, 2013 in the amount of $114,392.94. Item 7.4, accept the fund balance report as presented. Item 8.1, adopt a resolution authorizing the utilization of Northeast Multi Regional Training Incorporated and payment of annual membership fee. Item 9.1, adopt a resolution authorizing a Long Lake Road Engineering Services Work Order. Item 9.2, adopt a resolution authorizing a Construction Engineering Services Work Order for the Lakewood Terrace Phase 2 Improvements Project. Item 9.3, adopt a resolution approving the bid of Campanella and Sons Incorporated for the Lakewood Terrace Phase 2 Project. Item 9.4, adopt a resolution approving an Engineering Services Work Order for 2013 Lincoln Avenue Water Green Replacement Project. Item 9.5, adopt a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County for Washington Road Improvements. Item 9.6, adopt a resolution authorizing the Segalville Public Property Thermoplastic Scribing Machine. Item 9.7, adopt a resolution approving a bid from Acres Incorporated for landscaping services. Item 9.8, adopt a resolution approving a bid from Program One Incorporated for street sweeping. And item 9.9, electronics collection at the Public Works Facility on May 13 from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clemmons, seconded by trustee Trippan. Discussion? Madam Leader?
Trustee Fry?
Aye.
Trustee Newby?
Aye.
Trustee Simon Sully?
Aye.
Trustee Trippan?
Aye.
Trustee Wozinski?
Aye.
Trustee Clemmons?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.1, approve a payment of $396.68 to Ranger. Second.
Motion by trustee Trippan, item 7.1, seconded by trustee Simon Sully. Discussion? Madam Leader, roll.
Trustee Newby?
Aye.
Trustee Simon Sully?
Aye.
Trustee Trippan?
Aye.
Trustee Wozinski?
Aye.
Trustee Clemmons?
Epstein.
And trustee Fry?
Aye.
Community development, we have nothing on the agenda. Are there any reports? Building and zoning? Nothing on the agenda, any reports? Special events? Any reports?
Committee of the whole meeting will speak on it.
The committee of the whole meeting will speak on this?
Ooh.
Moving on to item 13.1, adopt a resolution by the Village of Round Lake and Round Lake Park Area, or Round Lake Area Park District for the planning of Adelbert Smith Park. There has been some discussion about unclear information. Mark, can you bring us up to date on it?
Absolutely. What we have for consideration for you is a resolution, it's a joint resolution between the Village of Round Lake and the Village, excuse me, Round Lake Area Park District. It's a resolution that is required for a grant application. It's a new grant that's being offered this year by, sponsored by ComEd through Openlands. And if you recall, we have park land that was donated up on Park and Park, and we still have to complete the work in order to get the rights for development of the park, but also Round Lake Area Park District has expressed interest in working with the Village on the planning for the park and potentially the operation. None of that has been addressed, but we need a resolution so we can get grant funds in order so we can proceed with both ensuring that the Village has all the proper documentation for the park as well as any planning we want to take down the road, or any activities. So the Village will be involved with establishing all the guidelines and developing the plans for the park, but at least we might have a funding source so we can get some help where needed. And again, the Round Lake Area Park District is also interested in partnering with us to do some of that planning. The grant is a maximum of $10,000 that could be awarded to the Village for that purpose.
So I see that this has to be post-park, no later than May 14. I'm wondering, when did we find out about this and it's just been...
We got it early May, uh, excuse me, early April, but I've been working with the Park District to see if they were interested. If you recall, when we first got the property some time ago, I had sent this information over to the Park District to see if they were interested in partnering still. And so it just took a while to get all the details and track to the joint resolution completed. That's what you get in those.
I don't know if everyone's up to snuff with this, with this little project, but we really don't have a whole lot of time. If we apply for this grant and then we decide that people don't want to go in that direction, are we bound, as long as we don't take the money, we're not bound and we don't get legalized?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. There is no, this just says that you're interested in the project. You have the funds to do the project if you choose to go forward with the grant, if we get the grant.
And it doesn't make any claim to who's actually going to run the park and how...
No, that's true. No, absolutely not. We're, this grant is to the Village of Round Lake, not because it's our property and it's not to the Round Lake Park District. If the Board's not interested in going in that direction, we may have to go in that direction. That was a thought some time ago when we first acquired it, that maybe a possibility. They've got a lot of funding through the John Hugur Hugener, I think it's the Fishery Foundation, and they were interested in supporting that type of project, so they would like to partner with us on it. No, there's nothing, all those details would have to be worked out by the Board.
Would the practice be passed with similar resolution, or same resolution as we're passing?
Yes, sir.
We are mentioning Round Lake Area Park District in here quite a bit, so I'm wondering if we were to go forward with this resolution in particular, aren't we sort of giving the impression we're doing this with the Park District?
If, as we decide to do down the road, yes. Yeah, the impression is that we would partner with them at this point, but there's no requirement to do that, it's a requirement to do that. We still, this is just so we get the grant application in for the potential for the funding. The grant comes to the Village, anything on partnering, anything that would be done would have to be decided in the future by the Board as part of the planning process.
Okay, so my point is, if we go forward with this and then we don't partner for whatever reason with the Parks District, haven't we misled the grant application?
No, because the, it's our application, it's for the planning for the park. It's not a joint application. It was just a joint resolution so that there was a majority of funding that may come from the Park. Yes, they may have that impression, but if the Board doesn't want to go forward with it, once the grant is provided, you still have to do it. Because we still would have to work out intergovernmental agreements, all that information, but the Board still has to decide what they want to do with that property and that park.
So that's my question, is if it's going to be a Round Lake park, why does the practice have to pass a resolution now?
It's just part of the grant process, just to express the interest in, you know, possibly doing something jointly. doing something jointly.
Are we getting through the foundation, I guess, along?
No, do you mean the ComEd grant?
Is the foundation, the Park District Foundation going to be a part of it?
No, not the Park District Foundation, the Round Lake Area Park District. The other partners, part of the district, I don't know all the ins and outs of how that works, but the John Huber Foundation is run by a couple of board members, I don't recall who they are, and, but they, Bob Newport essentially is given the authority through them and the Park District to spend some of those foundation dollars.
So if you look at the application, you'll see that it is just building around Lake, which is, I think, what you're saying, right?
I'd like to move this forward. Seconded? We need a motion to adopt the resolution, not to move it forward.
To adopt the resolution.
Okay. Seconded? Motion made by trustee Newby, seconded by trustee Clemmons. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. The mayor's comments. A couple of notes, personal thanks to all the exiting officers. Services have been appreciated. It's an honorable job, a selfless job, and we all, we all thank you so very much. I want to thank everybody who made Arbor Day plans and events a successful one. Special thanks to Public Works, all of the volunteers, trustee Wazinski for the special events and leading that, the board that was involved in planning it. Also to all of the vendors that made donations. I've heard that we've had a significant increase in the amount of desirable trees this year. It was very nice, thank you for all the hard work of the people that went out and secured those. Trustee Wazinski, if we could make sure, and I'm sure you've probably already done this, to make sure that all of those vendors that made donations, that we give a special thanks to them in writing. I think there's actually a plaque, isn't there, that we've got with the village seal on it and everything? And also to make sure that we don't forget Ron, I'm sorry to tell me his name so many times, Chuck.
Chuck Stewart.
Chuck Stewart, for his presentation on the importance of Arbor Day and what it's about, and also to Martin Arberdham about, for their presentation on the ashore. Certainly has affected us. And, and last time, to thank everybody who voted for us, supported us, and helped us through this election. I have to tell you that personally, this was one of the most enjoyable things that I've experienced in my life. I look forward to meeting with everybody and working with everybody, the responses that I've gotten from the county members, different organizations. Thank you, Jim, for being at a lot of those meetings and introducing me to so, so many players. It was almost a shock on people's faces to see Jim and I standing in the same room and talking with each other, and Jim introducing me to people that I need to partner with in the future. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor Dietz. And that's it for the mayor's comments. Item thirteen point three, trustees' comments?
I also would like to thank everybody that was involved in Arbor Day, thank you for all of your help, the things that we received, Ron, if you can pass that on to your workers as well, welcome aboard, Dan, Pat, and Henry. Sweetie, thank you for all your help with Arbor Day, Don, donations that came at this end, thank you, and Sonia, wherever you are, thank you, and Jim, thank you.
I wanted to say to Sonia, Joyce, and Jim, thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you guys, and I know this is not the last W that I will be seeing, because we are dedicated to this village, and I know I'll see you at all the other events and helping out as well, hard to pry you away. And then to our newly elected and re-elected, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you guys.
I'd just like to second the mayor's comments on Arbor Day, and again, thank Jim and Sonia and Joyce for making it such a smooth transition. I think that's one of the things that's really important for the village, to make sure that we get a real continuous operation, so we really appreciate that. As the mayor said, that was a, that was really, really good effort. And so, it's, again, congratulations, and that's it.
This time I am, but I'm proud to be a part of the team, and together, we're going to make something good. And thanks to, to our predecessors, we did, we still, like you said, we need your, need your things back sometime, too. So, we need to do very much.
My personal thanks to Jim, Sonia, and Joyce for your service and dedication, which greatly appreciate, and who personally greatly appreciate each one of you, thank you. Arbor Day, what a great job to all, everyone that participated. Ron, please express my appreciation and my thanks to all of the staff, they work so hard, they do so much, you are in particular, just an awesome job, and it all helped to make such a great success. Okay. I have just a couple of real quick questions, I was wondering, we received the Illinois Municipal Review, do the department heads receive this?
I do.
Okay. So I wanted to be sure that, as trustees, especially Henry knows, there's a lot of really great stuff in here, and there's actually an item in this for both Public Works and for police, and whoever's on those committees would probably get some good information and some good discussion time with our department heads because of this, and certainly with our village administrator, if there's any questions that aren't specifically department-related. Second of all, I'm sure we all received this, we all should have, from Tressler Government Law Presents, maybe we'd like to express?
You're doing great so far.
This is more or less, again, I think trustee Frye will get the most use out of it, but I don't know if all the other trustees took advantage of this two years ago. It's a great way to come into government and to know about what your job is, how to do it, the best way to proceed, a lot of tricky questions that you might come up to as years go on and things happen, and it's being offered to us for nothing. I like that phrase. By our council's company, so I think that if everyone has the opportunity to take advantage of this, it's May seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, from nine AM to three o'clock PM, and I believe it's in the Rosemont, Western O'Hare. And for anyone who would like to go, I know I'm going to go, so we can carpool, if you'd like to, wouldn't mind. Upon that, remember to recycle your electronics because they're no longer accepted at your driveway or your, your driveway or in front of your yard. Our next collection is Monday, May thirteenth, eight AM to five PM. It helps the village, the more we collect, the more we get back, so please remember to recycle. And I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Can I offer a grant that's used within the four hours?
Okay, in our minutes, have it in secret. Okay, thank you. So that would be Tuesday, April fourth.
And then I would, this time, thank trustee Frye for already attending a newly elected class already. He's given a jump on it already, I appreciate that. Also, Jim, Joyce, and Sonia, ran countless hours to operate this village, they did a remarkable job, and I just can't thank them enough for your service here. Also, the, to the people, we just want to thank you for your support, and would like to invite you to our next board meeting.
Thank you, trustees, there's no items for executive session. Now you get a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by trustee Trippon, seconded by trustee Frye. Meeting adjourned at eight forty-four PM.